Hello, I'd like to call to order the February 12th, 2024, meeting of the City Council of East Bethel. Can we please stand and say the pledge?
I believe this is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Miller will not be with us tonight. He has a family situation to deal with.
Make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard. Okay, to my knowledge, we don't have any presentations in public hearings, so we can go right into the public forum. Imagine that's why you're here? And Mr. Linder was first on the list.
For the last several years, the city has been trying to correct a bunch of ordinance violations.
Can you speak into the microphone, please? Can you say your name and address?
It's James Linder, 19423 East Trioke Circle.
Thanks.
For the last several years, the city has been trying to correct ordinance violations at 19419 East Trioke Circle. In December of 2023, I was informed that the city believed all ordinance violations had been corrected. Just looking at the property, multiple violations appeared to still be in place. To understand how that could be, I requested a meeting with Mr. Look, Mr. Berg, and Mr. Schmitz. This is a recap of the meeting with Mr. Look and Mr. Berg on January 16th. It was unfortunate, Mr. Schmitz was not available to provide background to the evolution of the permit and ordinance violations at 19419, or since 2019. During the discussions, I was informed multiple times that I was not the expert in the room, and that this set the tone that the meeting was not going to be as productive as I hoped. Mr. Look also said it will be a waste of his time. So my first issue was my second driveway on the property line. Several years ago, I've been concerned about damaging and killing trees on the property line with excessive driving over tree roots next to the tree trunks. Arborist and University Agriculture Programs verified that concern. Just Google "driving over tree roots." Arborist and University Studies showed that continually driving over tree roots with vehicles as small as garden tractors will cause damage. Craft's Easy Go Get-Luck Golf Cart is about 800 pounds, and the Polaris UTV is about 2,500 pounds. Besides soil compaction being a tree killer, driving back and forth 10 feet from my house is a nuisance, especially when it happens dozens of times a day and up to 70 times in one weekend. Mr. Look's opinion about not causing tree damage if the vehicle can be driven over a person's foot contradicts what Arborist and Universities have to say. So I asked why our second driveway is allowed, and I was showed a copy of the standards. It's in the ordinances. And I asked, when does continual driving on a designated path qualify as a second driveway? The reply was, our code does not address this. So ordinance number one is an ordinance on the second driveway, and it says it's allowed one access point from a public street. And in the upper, or the middle, left-hand side of the screen, that's the only access to this portion of the path that goes around the property. The next image is a picture of the driveway last year, the second driveway, last year. And, you know, they were, they plow it, they use it a lot, and they plow it. The next image is a picture of the driveway early, yes, last year, when it was covered with trap rock, which was put in.
What is that white stuff in that photo? Sorry, I'm just making a joke, because we have no snow. I remember last.
I'll sell you the photo after the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
In 2019, the, this area was filled in with trap rock, and then that's when they really started using it a lot. This is more this year. The, the next image has a picture of the, what I'm gonna just keep calling it a second driveway. From, this is a street view going down into the yard. The next image is of the north side of the property and the tree line right next to it. The next issue, our next image with, is what Aaron was able to get accomplished this year, where they took the trap rock out and put in black dirt, but they are still driving on it. And this was kind of a.
Is the structure on the right your house, or on the left?
On the right is mine. Their property is on the left. The tree line is right down the middle there.
All right, thanks.
So is the trees the line?
Yep. Actually, the trees were planted just inside the line years ago. My next question was, why do second driveways have to be five feet from the property line, which is kind of meaningless at this point, because they couldn't put it anyplace else if they were gonna use it? But I had another question about off-road vehicles, which was a third reason why I thought they shouldn't be used that much for traffic going back and forth between the road and the lake, and around the yard. And my question was, why aren't off-road vehicles allowed to be continually driven on a designated path within 50 feet of the property line? The reply was, the city opinion is this is a civil issue. I was told that the ordinance pertained to motocross tracks or kids riding back and forth on the property. I was also showed an aerial example of a motocross track. And there's a article, Article 4, that talks about off-road, on a city website, that talks about off-road vehicles operating no closer than 100 feet from any dwelling, which is, you know, way closer than it is. The next image is a aerial view off the, off of Anoka, showing 19419 and the riding area, which they, they use a lot. It shows the entry point from the Trioke Circle Street, goes down between, on the north side of their property, right next to the tree line, and makes a loop, a couple loops out in the yard, depending upon what they want to do. So they end up driving there a lot and putting ruts in the property, mostly their property. The next image is showing some of the ruts on the property line. The tree on the left is on my property. Their track is on their property. The next image is a closer view of the ruts. And the next view is a aerial, again, showing not only the track in their yard, but the tracks in my yard. And what they do is, because it gets so rutted sometimes, they'll drive into my yard to get around the ruts.
Okay, could I, could I interrupt? Because we do have, you know, a few people here who want to speak in the public forum. So you're not happy with your neighbor's behavior?
I'm not, two things. I'm not happy with my neighbors' behavior.
And you're not happy with the city's response so far?
And for the last couple of years, the city was actively trying to get some of these, not only the driving part, but there's also a number of structures, detached structures on the property. At one point, there were three gazebos, three sheds, and some additions that they made to the deck, pieces that they added on to the deck. And for the last several years, those were, appeared to be considered to be violations. So the city was, had been working on that for quite a while, trying to get my neighbors to do something about it. I'm gonna skip down to.
Well, let me, I wasn't, none of us were party, none of the city council were party to the meetings you had, but Aaron was, and he's sitting right here, so maybe, can you shed any light on any of this, Aaron?
I sure can, Mr. Mayor. I, I will let us, let the council know that the conversation with Mr. Linder, Mr. Look, and myself was over 45 minutes, so I don't know that we have the time tonight to address all of his potential concerns. The city's been diligently working since before I arrived at the city to come to some resolution to get the code violations at 19419 East Trioke Circle addressed. We did some significant work, got a lot of these items checked off of the list. Mr. Linder's pictures tonight, I believe, are from 2020, so that's not a very current photo of what the actual site looks like as of today. I would be more than happy to provide the council with an update of the progress at 19419, if you'd like.
Is there any means of resolving this outside of people going to court?
The residents at.
When you said civil, that's assume what you meant.
The residents at 19419 have been through the court system. He was convicted of a violation and sentenced to probation.
Violation of city ordinances?
Through city ordinance, and then the subsequent cleanup to where we are today was as a result of being on supervised probation. So.
But this doesn't pertain to the structures as much as the behavior, right?
Yeah, so some of the described behavior may be more harassing in nature, or an annoyance in nature, which our city ordinance might address through disorderly conduct. However, we don't necessarily address those issues and/or potentially noise. If the neighbors are doing something intentionally to harass the other neighbor, that's an issue that has to be handled either A, by the Sheriff's Department when the harassment is happening, or B, through the civil court system in terms of a small claims action for harassment.
Has the Sheriff's Department been involved in this at all?
No, the involvement, and as far as harassment has been concerned, I've been ignoring that and not bringing that up many of these meetings that I've had with the city. The meetings that I had with the city are focused on driving off-road vehicles on property lines, as they're focused on, which are ordinance violations. They're focused on the number of non-attached accessory structures in the yard, which is ordinance, not, you know, it's their thing. It's also focused on burning fires within 25 feet of a non, 25 feet of a combustible material. Right now, they fire pits inside of a pergola, which used to be a gazebo. And they, when I brought that up, as, you know, pointing out, hey, this looks like an ordinance violation, the response I got from that was, well, it burns the pergola down, that's their problem. And my comment back on that was, well, the pergola goes down, the garage's gonna go down. If the garage goes down, my house is gonna go down. And the response I got out of that was, well, that's what insurance is for. So there's been not only the number, likely damage to trees on my property because of being, driving too close too many times a day, there's issues with a number of attachments or structures in the yard. Couple of years ago, I asked if I could put a gazebo down to the lake, and I was informed that I couldn't do that because I already had a detached accessory structure. And I, at that time, I said, hey, my neighbor has got three gazebos, three sheds, and what else? There was, you know, things that they had done to their deck. And, and I'm not allowed to put a gazebo down when they're allowed to do that, and why is that? And then the last thing was concerning trash on the property. There was apparently a couple of inspections done in December, and my response to that was, well, if there is inspections done in December, are all of these things, including trash and possible fire risks, been overlooked? And now it's being stated that everything's within code. So that's why I asked for the meeting in January, and that's when we got the meeting. I, I didn't think that the responses truly lined up with what the ordinances are. So that's why I'm here today, just to say, okay, here's what I see, here's what I've presented to the people, and now whoever makes the ordinances, my feeling is it's up to whoever those people are to ensure things are being enforced.
Okay.
Well, I can shed a little light on the ATVs, dirt bikes, whatever. We went through that in 2012 with a property up on Sunrise, and that's when the ATV ordinance was put together. And I'm not gonna go through the whole thing right now, but, you know, I get together with Aaron and kind of explain what we came out of that, and what the interpretation was. It's, it's not against the ordinance to drive your ATV up and down your yard. You can do it for two hours, and then you have to stop. And if you don't, then it becomes a nuisance. We actually were trying to hire the deputies to come in with sound meters, and they said we'd have to sit there for an hour.
And every 10 seconds, monitor and see.
And if at any point they stopped, then the test is over, and you restart it. So harassment, that's awful tough to prove.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that this is being done as harassment. What I'm saying is the ordinance states you can't be, drive an off-road vehicle on a designated path, which is what that one 2020 thing was to try to show, is they have a path out there that gets packed down.
But that's not, that's not a designated path, but what?
It's a path.
So is your lawnmower when you cut the grass, then?
Yes. But with a lawnmower, you're not doing it 70 times a weekend, and that's what's happening here. So it, okay, it's not a designated path with a consensus stand and anything like that. For whatever reason, they like driving around circles in their yard, and it not only packs the yard down, but they're running over tree roots. Last year, I had to cut down four trees.
Mr. Mayor, if you would like to, we can do a code enforcement item at a future council meeting where we can provide updates to include 19419 East Front, or East Trioke Circle, for you guys to see the work that the city has done compared to what Mr. Linder is presenting. As we know, individuals read the code differently, and making determination as to what may or may not be the meaning of one word or two words in the code is up to interpretation. If you'd like, we can recap that along with a few of the other cases that we have in order to move tonight's meeting along. I don't know where to get to our resolution.
Well, I mean, we've, we've heard your grievances and issues, and I assure you, City Administrator Look is either watching this right now or will be soon. He's out of town, but I'd like to follow up with Matt and Aaron and get more information on this. And what, what we can't do, you know, there are disagreements between neighbors all the time, and we're put in a position where this neighbor wants to use the city's power, if you will, to deal with the other neighbor because they don't like them, or whatever. You know, they're rude, they play their music loud, whatever. And we can't get into all that, or we'd never get anything else done. But I just want to make sure that our, I want to revisit the topic with Matt, who you met with, and Aaron, and just say, have we done all we can do within, you know, reason? And at that point, I guess it becomes a civil matter, and you guys gotta go to, you know, grievance settlement or something, I don't know, arbitration, whatever.
I've been trying to take a simplistic view of this.
Yeah, well.
I see, I see an object, and I see an ordinance, and when I read it, this is not supposed to be there. And, and just try to say, oh, that's gotta be a civil case. Having a fire pit closer to, you know, combustible material, which is close to a garage, to me, that's not a civil case, that's a, and it's an outright ordinance to say you can't do that, but they do. The other thing that was really disappointing, and that was when I was talking about detached accessory structures, the handout that I got in the meeting was that permits, that accessory structures are permitted on parcels one and a half acres or less to have one detached accessory structure in addition to a 200-foot or less structure. Now, that's what was handed out in the meeting. What's actually on the website is all accessory structures greater than 200 square feet must comply with the following regulations. One shed of 200 square feet or less is allowed on all properties, and is not included in the calculation. Now, that word got changed to shed to structure.
You see, we've spent 15 minutes on this so far.
I've been spending.
Normally, the limits on each person is five minutes, so we're trying our best, and maybe I'm just not, I'm being too loosey-goosey about it or something. But we're, apparently, we're not gonna resolve this right now. So we, we understand your issues, and Matt will be seeing this, and Aaron's right here, so he understands it. But I think we need to move on with this portion of the meeting.
I'll concede to that, but my whole, whole reason for being here was to highlight. Here's what I was told in, in the past. Here's what I was told in the meeting. And there's a disconnect there, and now I think it's up to the people.
Yeah, and I want to talk to the people, or the person who led the meeting, and say, what's with the disconnect?
Well, I think it's more than that. I think it's up to the people that wrote the ordinance to say, does this picture match your ordinance? And my, my unexpert opinion is that they don't.
Okay, well, that's what we'll try to get to the bottom of. So thank you for your time, and sorry I gotta cut you off, but we gotta get on with the meeting.
You know, I wanted to get here to get this out and get it to the people that can, you know, who are actually responsible for the. For the ordinances.
We're not gonna forget about it, so. The next person who was signed up for the public forum is it Dean Ealing?
Ealing.
Ealing, okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
Says you want to talk about affordable housing.
Uh, yes.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Dean Ealing, 20701 Monroe Street. I've been a resident of East Bethel since May of 1989. And my concern tonight is in connection with the Tax Increment Financing District, the TIF, that was approved by the East Bethel City Council on July 20th, 2020, for the development of the East Bethel Village 2 apartment building, which is now managed by INH Properties in Wake Park, Minnesota. Prior to that July 20th approval, the council was advised by the Community Development Director that the proposed East Bethel Village 2 apartments would consist of 70 units, which 14 units would be affordable to persons at or below 50% of the area immediate income. As we sit here tonight, all 70 units in East Bethel Village 2 are being offered at full market rate rent. There are no units offered at affordable rates, as the 2020 City Council was advised would be the case. Affordable rate is defined as less than 30% of one's income. The 2022 compliance report submitted to the city showed that nine of those 14 TIF-defined affordable units were occupied. The average difference, or, excuse me, all nine units were leased at full market rate and not an affordable rate. The average difference between the market rate charged and the HUD definition of affordable rate for those nine units was $516 each. At an average of $516 of monthly extra rent per unit, the annual rate of extra rent from all 14 units would be $86,688. Over the 12-year life of the TIF, extra rent collected could be more than $1 million, every dollar of which would be collected from those who are least able to afford it. And that is just from East Bethel Village 2. There are another 14 TIF units in the original building with what I presume to be similar rental situations. 15% of East Bethel's households are cost burdened according to our own comprehensive plan for '24. With that vision and an increasing need for affordable housing, the East Bethel City Council created the TIF District. It resulted in the construction of the East Bethel Village 2 apartments. At this point, I feel I should explain that I have not taken up the study of tax increment financing districts as a new hobby in my retirement. Instead, it is because I am an advocate and agent for a young man who leases a one-bedroom unit at East Bethel Village 2. Unfortunately, John suffered some muscular dystrophy. He is totally disabled, in his wheelchair and hospital bed dependent. His sole income is from social security disability, and as such, he qualifies for affordable housing. During our initial visit last March at East Bethel Village 2, I asked about reduced rates, rents due to TIF. We were told that there would be no rent reduction for his unit. In order for anyone to qualify for a lease at East Bethel Village 2, one must show proof that they have income that is at least two and one-half times the amount of the rent. John, of course, could not do that because of his very limited social security income. However, he was told that if his mother presented proof that she had income of at least three times the amount of the rent, and if she co-signed the lease, then he would qualify for the unit at market rate rent. So it appears to me that East Bethel Village 2 is making housing available to low-income families, which is much different than making housing affordable to low-income families, which is one of the objectives of the TIF in the first place. Obviously, INH Properties does not adhere to rent limits for East Bethel Village 2, or Phase 1 of the project, for that matter. Yet the TIF agreement approved by the City Council states that 20% of their units are to be made affordable for low-income housing families. Other Minnesota cities with TIF districts have established rent limits as part of their TIF district requirements. They include Bloomington, Minnesota, which requires rent limits and also requires that TIF housing districts not be used to finance market rate properties. The city of Victoria, Minnesota, also requires rent limits and compliance reports showing rental rates by individual units within the TIF district. The city of Minneapolis requires all of the affordable units shall bear rents not greater than 30% of the adjusted income. Lastly, the city of Alexandria, Minnesota, approved a $25 million TIF project in the March, in March of 2023, that included income and rent limits for a 130-unit facility for those 55 and older. However, three months later, on June 12th, 2023, Alexandria City Council voted to remove the rent restrictions at the request of the developer, INH Properties. INH Properties is correct when it says there is no state law requiring rent limits. However, I believe that when a business is enjoying profits enabled by government financing tools, it should embrace the spirit of the law and not just the letter of the law. East Bethel's own comprehensive plan says that 15% of your constituents are burdened by housing costs. You could lift this burden from many of them by merely creating rent limits in the existing TIF districts. I urge you to consider creating rent limits that reflect the affordable housing percentage of 30% of income for the previously defined 28 units at both of the East Bethel Village apartment buildings. Now, each of you has voluntarily signed up for a demanding job, and as you well know, a job with very few thank yous. That tells me a lot about you, and creating rent limits will tell a great many others, great many others in our city, a lot about you, including John, who tonight is watching us from his hospital bed at East Bethel Village 2. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I'm not sure who to direct the question, but that was my understanding when the TIF.
districts were created. Who oversees that to make sure that they're not making money that they shouldn't be?
I didn't touch on it briefly. So, essentially, what the city does is the city uses their financial advisors, Ellers, to do the income qualification testing. And then, from that point, then, they either qualify or they don't, and then the TIF is assigned to the actual owners. So, again, if there's further questions or anything that you'd like to send me by email, I can kind of follow up with you and kind of put you in contact with Ellers, our financial advisors, too, so.
Yes, I have more information that I'd like to share, but we don't really have the time tonight.
Just to let you know, Mike Jezarski is the Finance Director of East Bethel, and he's also the Deputy City Administrator, that's why.
Okay.
He's filling in tonight. But Mike knows everything about the finances of East Bethel, and.
Perfect. Could we meet then?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I think.
Just to let you know, they just started an audit, so if you could be considerate of his time.
I think, I think we've exchanged emails in the past, so you can just shoot me an email, and we can start the dialogue that way.
All right, appreciate it.
I have the same question that Bob had, and that is, well, who's the oversight for this? Because we don't need to be giving tax increment financing to people to build market-rate rental properties, you know?
Absolutely.
Let the market, you know, if you can't make it in the market, then maybe you shouldn't build it, you know?
Yeah, that is one other item that caught my attention while I was talking with the property manager at East Bethel Village Two, and I asked about reduced rates, and she said that they do not have them. She said, we are a market-rate property.
I thought that's what the whole premise was when they created that district.
Well, then, go to a bank and get market-rate financing.
Well, it's my understanding of with TIF, we create a district for it to be, it will be used in if the owner that has applied for it and is granted to, does not take advantage of TIF, they do not have to use TIF. If they do not use TIF, they do not get the benefits from TIF. So, if they are able to rent out all their apartments at market rate, then they do not get to use any of the advantages of TIF.
Which is retroactive, because you don't find out about it until later, right? Just like we have the Viking Preserve homes, the same thing, the people in those homes didn't qualify.
Yeah.
Anymore.
And so that they don't get to use TIF.
But again, that was the whole premise of it.
Yeah. I mean, were they misleading when they came in and applied for the TIF? Or did they change horses in the middle of the stream?
Well, that was my big question, and that compliance report showed those nine families were all under the fifty percent AMI.
Average, median income.
Yeah, average, median income, sorry. Yet, they were all, so they qualified as far as the income limits, and so they should have been provided the thirty percent, but instead, they were charged market rate. And how they, and I don't, what I don't understand is how they were able to waive their own two-and-a-half times rule about, you got, your income has to be two-and-a-half times greater than the rent to qualify for a lease. How can you do both?
Well, everything was set up for low-income elderly people, that's what.
I think if you forward me your questions, I can forward those onto our financial advisor, and we can get those straightened out, so.
Appreciate the time that you did give me and book talk, Mike.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The third and last person on the docket for the public forum is Tammy Gimble. Says your topic is email. So, if you can, if you can do the same thing, name, address, and.
Tammy Gimble, two-two-three-five-nine Baton Street, Northeast East Bethel. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I received an email on the first of February here. I'm going to read it. Ms. Gimble, thank you for responding to Aaron's request to meet. As you have probably heard, I've replaced Jack Davis as the City Administrator. As the new kid on the block, all the outstanding unresolved issues in people's minds become renewed with efforts to find someone new to sympathize with their efforts. The city has been receiving ongoing communications from Ms. Dahlman concerning your kennel license and IUP. There are allegations of violating the IUP. From what we can determine, the evidence is weak, and the insinuations are nevertheless forthcoming. It is my desire to bring this conversation to an end. I would like an opportunity to first and foremost, meet you and see your operation in person. As I understand, you have already passed your annual inspection and provided documentation required by the IUP. This is not about conducting another inspection. The next inspection would be scheduled more likely twelve months from the prior one. I would like to go over the conditions of the IUP so that there is clarity with both parties. If there is a time available for you the week of the eighth, we would appreciate it. Both Aaron and I will pay you a friendly, non-confrontational visit. Please let me know if that works for you. Thanks. Matt Look, Administrator. So, I'm going to read what I wrote. I'm going to presume that the Mayor and Council, you guys, were not aware of that email. The definition, again, of malfeasance is wrongdoing or misconduct, especially by a public official. The definition of harassment is aggressive pressure or intimidation. This email is very similar to the two years ago when Councilmember Beck, Councilmember Urkel, and Planning Member Smith showed up at my residence escorted by two Anoka County deputies. That one ended with Beck resigning, Urkel was censured, and Smith was fired. It's disturbing to me why someone in that kind of power, Mr. Look, includes a word "non-confrontational." The email says, outstanding unresolved issues in people's minds and ongoing communications from Ms. Dahlman, who we all know is Christine Dahlman, who resides at one-seven-five-four-zero Highway sixty-five, Ham Lake, Ham Lake. Christine Dahlman has been harassing me for almost six years now, and I presume Mr. Look is aware of this, considering what I've heard on how Mr. Look has conducted business in the past as an Anoka County Commissioner. You, Mr. Look, and actually, anyone in the city, is not even qualified to do an inspection on my facility. And the fact that you wrote, see your operation in person, whether you like it or not, is an inspection. That combined with a seriously unprofessional email makes me wonder if he's even qualified to be the City of East Bethel Administrator. I don't, I do not want to be here. I really, I don't want to be here. The City of East Bethel is discontinuing my services as animal control and has terminated my employment as a captain of the Fire Department due to my work-related diagnosis of multiple myeloma cancer, which has cost taxpayers greatly, and now has hired someone who is under the guidance of a mentally ill person, in my opinion, from Ham Lake to continue to have a platform to harass me and my business. It was my understanding that Mr. Look was hired to help with the government funding of the city sewer water and Highway sixty-five corridor, not to harass a female small-business owner. I know your first initial probably gut instinct, at least for Council, because you hired him, is to defend him as well. I just want you to read that email, and then read it again, and look through it, and imagine being a small-business owner. I mean, we heard the first person come up here about what Mr. Look said to him, and this is, I mean, he's not even full-time yet, is he? Sixty percent, and he's, he's in communications with Christine Dahlman. That's disgusting to me.
Well, thank you for sharing your thoughts. Well, that will close the public forum and move back into our agenda, which is the consent
Make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Anybody want to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Discussion?
I want to pull A.
Okay.
I want to pull K.
All for approving the consent agenda, subject to pulling A and K.
Aye.
Very good.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Okay, item A, approved bill list. Mr. Smith?
I just got some questions on, with the workers' comp insurance premium. I mean, it's, it's all over here, and, I mean, just for an example, like on the Fire Department alone, it's forty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty cents. Do we look into better rates at all? I guess, I don't know, Mike, is that something that we shop around, or?
Historically, we have not shopped those rates around. Historically, the league offers the best rates for workers' compensation. Obviously, they insure almost all the cities in, in the state with workers' comp. The bill you're referring to actually is a total of a hundred and six thousand, two seventy-nine, and on your bill list, it's split between the eight departments.
Right.
And we split it based upon, again, there's three major factors that we split it upon. The salary for each department, the risk assessment for each department. So, obviously, the Fire Department, there's more risk involved with that job as opposed to myself sitting at desk all day.
Right.
And then, the last part is the modification rate or our historical claims. So, the safer we are as a city, that modification rate comes down. So, anytime we have any kind of claims, then our rate goes up, and therefore, we pay more in premium, so.
Okay, that was a question I had on there. It just seems like it's, when you, every time you turn around, it's like, we're supposed to be getting such a great deal from the League of Minnesota Cities. I'm just curious if we should look and shop around, or sell, just in case.
Right.
Because it's like, sometimes when you get comfortable with people that say that they're giving you the best deal, sometimes they're not.
Yeah, that's a good question, and I'm not sure who actually underwrites, you know, workers' comp insurance for cities. Two of the big factors that kind of are influencing our rates right now are, we had two substantial claims in the last, we'll say, four years. So, once those kind of fall off, our, our, yep, our, it'll go down, so.
Okay. I'm just curious, like, like I say, I don't know who would be doing the shopping around, but if we have anybody that can do that, I think we should.
Again, being mindful of the audit that you mentioned earlier, start, started today, which is a large, comprehensive project that sucks up a lot of your time. But I would like to revisit this topic. I was going to pull it myself. I mean, the quantities of money are substantial, and what I really would like to see beyond just possibly shopping it, find out if anybody else offers this insurance. If not, then they're a monopoly.
Right.
Then we shouldn't be surprised by high rates, right? But the other thing would be the rate history, how it's changed over the past five years or ten years, you know?
Yeah.
If it's a twenty percent per year increase, it's no wonder our jaws are dropping. But anyway, as you can fit it in your schedule, the audit takes priority over this.
Sure.
But it's just something we should probably.
No, I understand, just.
Pay a little more attention to.
Put it in there.
Yep, I'll definitely follow up.
I'm glad you brought it up, Jim.
Appreciate that. And then, on page eight, Mayor City Council, Professional Services Civic Plus, I don't know what that is, but it's three thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. What is that, Mike?
Yep, so anytime we do updates to our code, we have to, we contract with MuniCode, who is now owned by Civic Plus, so anytime we have updates to the code, it gets fed through their system, and then that's the charge associated with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
What code changes were that, was that attached to?
Um, do you know offhand, Aaron?
I'm gonna, well, I think Carrie submits maybe a quarterly update on any ordinances that have changed within the last quarter. They all go in at one time, so it could be anything that we've amended since probably... There she is.
That was from the submission, the supplement that was submitted last August.
What was the subject? What was the?
We had, I think, at least six different changes that were all submitted at the same time.
Could you let us know what those were, because?
I can send it to you.
Yeah, no, just.
It was in the latest update that went into everybody's codebooks.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, if you could just let us know what they were, we'd appreciate it.
Then I got another question.
Back to the A.T., yeah. She handles the audio and all for the meeting.
On page nine, for street maintenance, acre doors, three thousand fifty-five, what is that about? Do you know what that one is?
Let me see if I can bring that one up. It's under the Street Department?
Yeah, Street Maintenance. It's like three-quarters of the way down the page.
Oh, acre doors.
Yeah.
I thought you said paper doors.
No.
What does that mean?
No, I wouldn't think they'd be that much paper door.
Well.
I'm just going to scroll through all the.
Guessing it's a roll-up door on one building or another.
That's what I'm trying to think. It's curious.
For three thousand bucks, it's probably a couple or a very large one. That's who I use, have for twenty-seven years.
Looks like it was a broken door spring cable replacement at the Public Works Building.
Broken torsion spring, probably.
Yeah, it looks like they fixed a whole bunch of stuff.
I was going to say, it's got to be more than a spring and a cable.
It's, uh, here's the, here's the invoice.
Those are also heavy-duty, large doors.
Probably a better explanation.
Okay, yeah, they got inner, outer shaft, okay. Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to know what it was all about. And that's all I got. So, I make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Item A on the consent agenda.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of approving item A on the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Mr. DeRoche, you called for item K.
Yeah, just a quick one here. For carpet and paint replacement, I think it's long overdue in this building. If you notice on the floor, there's a lot of big stains, and being such a light-colored carpet, it's one of the first things people see when they walk in here. So, I think it's a good idea to replace it.
Yeah, being an unobservant person, I hadn't really noticed it, but I did a walkthrough before the meeting, and this carpet was ugly the day it was put in, and it hasn't gotten any better-looking since. But, yeah, there's a lot of stains throughout the building, and touch-up painting is needed and whatnot. It's just very dated. So, Matt's done a preliminary budget for it, and it's within the annual maintenance for the building. And as, as part of that, I mentioned to Matt, and I'll reiterate it here, is the senior center is as stark as a prison gymnasium. I mean, it's just stark. It's just white and gray floor. I mean, you know, it couldn't be any more bare bones. And I remember being at a meeting, and you, you were there, Karen, where we talked about it could really use some, you know, some warmth to it, you know, whether it's photos or, or whatever, mural, whatever, but something better than, than the way it is, which is, like I said, very stark. So, I'm going to ask that the staff include getting some ideas about what to do with the senior center to kind of warm it up a little bit and make it a little more user-friendly than it is now.
Better seat cushions in here.
Better seat cushions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actual seat cushion.
You mean, so you don't have to bring your own pillow to sit on? Okay, all right.
That being said, I move to approve.
Okay, Mr. DeRoche has moved to approve item K of the consent agenda. All those in favor? Oh, we have to get a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second? For Mr. Smith, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. That completes our consent agenda, so we're on to item seven on the agenda, which is new business. And under item A, seven A, is planning commission appointments, and we have two candidates as of this afternoon, or earlier today, we have two candidates. And the only issue is, one term is for, call it ten months or so, and the other is for three years, one's to complete someone else's term who resigned, and the other is... One's to complete someone else's term who resigned and the other is to replace someone who didn't run again, so. What are your thoughts about that?
Uh, we, yeah, two candidates, got two spots open.
Right, so the only thing is who takes which term, you know?
Uh, looking at the resumes, uh, Mr. Jorgensen has a lot more experience in these matters. And because of that reasoning, I would, uh, suggest a three-year term for him.
Okay. What do you two guys think? The other, other two guys? Any thoughts, one way or the other?
Uh, no, I don't really have any thoughts. I think that once they both are on the planning commission, they can maybe make their own decision if they want to be staying on there, if they have the choice.
Yeah, see if they like it, if it's something they want to continue with.
Yup. So either way, it doesn't matter to me.
Any thoughts, Bob?
No, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a, a preference, one way or the other. So I'll defer to Brian's, uh, recommendation.
I'll, uh, make a motion then to, um, appoint Mr. Corey Jorgensen to the three-year term and Mr. Brian Downey to the one-year term to the planning commission.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. Item seven-two, seven point two, is septic variance for forty-three-ten channel lane northeast. I imagine, Mr. Berg, you've got a thing or two to say about that.
Couple pages, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Give me just a second here to get us all lined up where we need to be. All right, apologize for the delay there.
No problem.
Uh, on November sixteenth of twenty-twenty-three, the city received an application from the owner of four-three-one-zero channel lane northeast to allow for the replacement of a non-compliant septic system at that address. The applicant has hired Leschinsky Services Incorporated to repair the existing system servicing the property. Leschinsky Services Incorporated discovered that the location of the existing system is located on the four-point-seven acre parcel, um, for the system. Uh, due to the shape of the lot, the building placement and shore, and shoreline overlays is in the right-of-way. While creating the septic design to remove and replace the existing drain field, uh, Mr. Leschinsky, uh, plotted it out as to how much of the right-of-way, uh, the existing system is in for you. Four-three-one-zero channel lane is located in the Oak Ridge Second Edition, which was originally approved and platted in July of nineteen sixty-two by the Village of East Bethel Council. City staff have researched the property records and discovered that there was additional septic work completed in nineteen seventy-nine in which the drain field was added to an existing system. City staff are unable to locate any license agreement or variances issued to permit the existing placement of the drain field, nor any council minutes, uh, discussion from nineteen sixty-two or the year nineteen seventy-nine. The applicant has owned the property since September of nineteen ninety-one and has no knowledge of any previous variance issues or licensing and is looking to fix the non-compliant system in order to place the house on the market for a future sale. If approved, uh, a license and use agreement will be required to permit the use of the right-of-way in order to reconstruct the drain field in its current location as it is thirty feet into the right-of-way and straddling the owner's front property line. The applicant is requesting a variance to reduce the front yard setback from the standard of ten feet to zero feet for the replacement of the drain field and tanks. The system current placement meets all other setback requirements as well as those neighboring wells. Uh, considering, the consideration of a variance requires a three prac, three-factor practical difficulties test. The first factor is a test of reasonableness, which means that the landowner would likely use the property in a practical way, but cannot do so under the rules of the strict ordinance. In this case, the septic system is required for the home to be considered habitable. The approval of the variance would allow this property to continue to be used as a residence. The second factor is a test of uniqueness and the issue for the variance is due to circumstances unique to the property, not caused by the landowner himself. The uniqueness generally relates to the physical characteristics of a parcel of property. In this case, the parcel has limited space for a drain field due to lot size created in the nineteen sixties. The primary structure or the home was placed approximately thirty-six and a half feet from the ordinary high water level, thirty-one-point-one feet from the front lot line and ten-point-five feet from the side yard lot line. A detached garage was placed sixty feet from the ordinary high water level, twenty-two-point-seven feet from the front property line and eighteen-point-four feet from the side yard lot line. Today's shoreline setbacks for structures, uh, are seventy-five feet from the ordinary high watermark. Therefore, this residence doesn't even meet today's standards. Uh, the house is twenty-five feet from the front lot line and seven feet from side yard lot lines. Additionally, there is thirty feet between the primary residence and the detached accessory structure, leaving no room for a septic system. Current setback requirements for septic treatment systems are fifty feet from the ordinary high watermark and fifty feet from any well, including neighboring wells and the well on the property, twenty feet from any structure and ten feet from any property line. Tanks are required to be ten feet from any structure and ten feet from property lines. The well serving this residence is in the basement of the house and is going to have to be capped and relocated. The third factor, uh, is that a variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This factor is used to consider whether a resulting structure or improvement is out of scale or out of place or otherwise inconsistent with surrounding area. The existence of a non-compliant sewage treatment system that's already located in the right-of-way that is being proposed to be replaced, uh, it has existed in this location since at least May of nineteen seventy-nine, when the permit was issued for the installation. On January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, the planning commission met and held a public hearing and there were no public comments. After reviewing the material, the planning commission voted by five to zero vote and make the red, recommendation of approval to the city council on the attached resolution granting a variance reduction of the standard allowing for the installation of a replacement septic system at the front yard setback standard from ten feet to zero feet at four-three-one-zero channel lane northeast with conditions. The city council should request, should review the request, consider the planning commission's formal recommendation and consider approving the variance as presented in resolution twenty-two-four-dash-twelve with the conditions of requiring a license and or use agreement with the City of East Bethel prior to the issuance of a septic replacement permit.
Thank you, Aaron.
Where do they plan on putting a well?
Um, the well has to be fifty feet from the septic location. I believe it's going to be in the front right-hand corner of the lot here by the house.
Is this the property where the well is currently in the house?
The well is in the, in the basement of the house in this front, uh, northwest corner inside the house.
Yeah.
In order to sell, it's going to have to be capped and moved anyway.
Wow.
Um, so that is a, uh, requirement that they will have to accomplish. Um, however, uh, the well company is requesting that the septic be installed first so then they can take their measurement to install the well in a location that's fifty feet from the septic system. Uh, however, knowing that there may or may not be a variance issued in this case, um, they don't know where a septic system will go until, uh, we take action tonight.
Yeah.
Well, I move to push the variance forward.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this variance under resolution twenty-two-four-dash-twelve. Any further discussion?
I would, uh, support that. Well, we, we have lot, the lot line where it is and the reasoning why, if you actually look at the lot overhead from aerial view, it's a very interesting and unique little
Yeah.
lot. And, uh, I can kind of see and understand why the, why it was designed like that. But as far as, uh, true, had, if, when you put, talk about, uh, having the road line, we're being here thinking this, the septic will be right out by the road. Uh, in this case, that is actually not the case. It's just because of where the.
Yeah, I went over and looked at it and it doesn't look like it looks on that diagram. That's the right-of-way, but that's not the physical. It just looks like a turn in the road.
Yeah.
Our Public Works Director was surprised when I brought this to his attention. He had no idea that that, uh, existed on maps.
Yeah.
Uh, my hypothetical is that they needed, uh, front lot line measurements. And in order to accomplish that for the purposes of the development, they made a unique little cul, future cul-de-sac, if you will, to gain more lot line for those three lots.
Well, if you take this lot's left lot line and right lot line, brought them right out to the road.
You're not going to have a lot.
There won't be any frontage.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, a little history. I think it was two thousand twelve when the city council granted a license and usage on Sylvan Street. Do you remember that one, Craig? Where they had the same scenario, they had nowhere to put a septic and there was one of the city five lots that are on Coon Lake. And the city gave them permit and license to use that with the understanding, if the city ever decides to use that street, which I don't really think. Um, they couldn't use it for their dock, they couldn't use it for recreation strictly for the septic. So it has been done before.
Any further discussion? Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor, say, to approve it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard. Item seven-point-three is Hidden Prairie Preliminary Platte. This is the proposed development on or off of East Bethel Boulevard. Aaron, are you on the floor?
I am, one second here, Mr. Mayor. I will have, uh, all, us all queued up in the right location.
It'd be so easy to have some fun with you, Aaron. But I'm not going to be like that.
All right, um, more words from me.
Yeah.
On July twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-three, the planning commission reviewed a concept plan for a revised development for previously approved preliminary plat called Hidden Pines, a rural residential subdivision. The developer acquired additional, uh, land adjacent and incorporated this additional acreage into a revised plan. A public was, help, a public hearing was held and a recommendation of approval was forwarded to the city council on August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. The city council at that point approved the proposed concept plan. On July fifth of twenty-twenty-four, a preliminary plat application and supporting materials was delivered to the city. This plat is consistent with the, uh, approved concept plan. It consists of seventeen buildable, single-family rural residential lots with the rural residential zoning district, the minimum lot size is two acres, um, with a density not to exceed one unit per two and a half acres. Um, all lots within the proposed Hidden Prairie subdivision meet the two-acre minimum lot size and their seventeen units fall below our density requirements. Additionally, each lot meets the minimum required of two hundred feet width at the front right-of-way at the setback and the setback line. Uh, the development will be accessed off of East Bethel Boulevard or County Road fifteen. Therefore, the Anoka County Highway Department was required to review the plan. They submitted a comment letter attached to your packet dated January ninth of twenty-twenty-four with comments. The developer will be required to satisfactorily address all these comments prior to any grading taking place at the site. Uh, the internal street in this development will have to be constructed to city standards with no temporary cul-de-sacs being permitted. East Bethel Public Works comments were addressed during the previ, previous preliminary plat and have provided no new comments to the new plat. The Parks Commission, uh, reviewed the new concept on August eighth of twenty-twenty-three and recommended park dedication fees in Louisville Park land. The Parks Plan for the City of East Bethel does not support a park in this area of the city. The city engineer reviewed the preliminary plat and provided a comment letter on January twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-four. Uh, the developer will be required to, will be required to satisfy all preliminary plat comments prior to filing a final plat application. Uh, as of this afternoon, I did receive a developer response to the comment letter from the city engineer addressing the initial concerns. On January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, the planning commission met and held a public hearing on the new preliminary plat. Two residents with adjacent property had questions about surveying ditches and an exist, existing drain field on an adjacent lot. The developer was offered an opportunity to address the questions. At the conclusion of the discussion, an additional condition was added to the resolution to address the neighboring septic drain field. By five to zero vote, the planning commission recommends approval of the preliminary plat to the city council. The city council should review the request, consider the planning commission's formal recommendation of approval of the preliminary plat presented in resolution twenty-two-four-dash-thirteen.
Make a motion for approval, the preliminary plat of Hidden Prairie as presented in resolution twenty-two-four-dash-one-three.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, who makes sure that these le, uh, letters are followed through on? Is that Aaron?
That would be me.
All right.
It's, uh, item eight on the resolution. A satisfactory, satisfactory location or verification of the septic drain field located on nineteen-seven thirty-four East Bethel Boulevard northeast must be established prior to release of final plat. That's what you were talking to at the end there.
Yup, that's correct.
Part of the resolution. All those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. So that brings us to item seven dot four, Viking Meadows Preliminary Platte.
Mr. Attorney, do I have to, um, move to bring that back up for reconsideration?
We did review the, uh, minutes as well as the video from last, the last council meeting. Um, Councilman DeRoche did make a motion for this item to be presented on this agenda. It was seconded and that was voted on.
So it's already been done, basically?
However, if we're, if we want to procedurally do it again, we can do that.
I, I appreciate that, that helps. And as a result, this is, uh, appropriately before, um, this board. You may proceed.
Okay, so everything's according to Hoyle, as they say.
Um, legal term, everything is copacetic.
Copacetic, okay, I like that. Fall else fail, Strohsmalat, none of the conversation.
I don't even know if that's Latin, and I took Latin.
I don't know what else it is. Okay.
All right, on November, this information's all going to feel very, very familiar to you all.
Yeah.
Um, uh, I don't know that I necessarily have anything new to add to it. I will give a brief background. I'm not going to highlight all of the dates. This, this staff report is virtually the same as, uh, uh, two weeks ago. On November eighth, twenty-twenty-three, the preliminary plat and planned unit development application from Catstone Homes Incorporated for the redevelopment of Viking Meadows Golf Course was received. The proposal shows the redevelopment of a hundred and fifty-five acres of land, which spans across the zoning classifications of mixed-use, single-family residential. The proposal shows ninety-five acres of develop-able land and will contain a proposed two-hundred-and-forty-two lots. In addition, the proposal contains sixty acres of open space, which also includes ten acres of park and recreation space. In your, uh, in the staff report, I've outlined all of the dates, uh, that were in the previous report that highlights all of the requested and or necessary actions, uh, on behalf of the city and or by the city council. Uh, staff have determined that the proposal with the approval of a homeowners association is in compliance with our twenty-twenty-four comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance and the official zoning map. Additionally, the proposed preliminary plat and P U D meets the intent of the criteria for granting a planned unit development based on, uh, city ordinance section fifty-six. All comments from the city engineer must be satisfied prior to the application of a final plat. Any and all Anoka County Highway Department or engineer comments must be satisfied prior to the application of a final plat, including but not limited to a plan review, right-of-way access permit and a county ditch. including but not limited to a plan review, right-of-way access permit, and a county ditch review. Uh, additional information was provided, uh, from Capstone regarding the outline of a homeowners association that was distributed to council members as well as put, uh, here tonight for you to review. There are some diagrams, uh, highlighting the areas of responsibility and what, uh, the homeowners association will be responsible for. Uh, after all the additional reviews and subsequent information, along with the original request, city council may consider the planning commission's formal recommendation and consider approval of the preliminary plat and plan unit development as presented or provide staff with the findings of fact for a formal denial.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
Um, yeah, I'll move to approve Viking Meadows Preliminary Platte.
It'd be resolution twenty-twenty-four-dash-zero-four?
Sure. I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded. Do we have any further discussion?
Long time coming.
Mayor, uh, council members, uh, if I have a question to Community Director, uh, Berg, if, if I, with the mayor's leave?
Please.
So I just, uh, saw the Capstone letter of February ninth of twenty-twenty-four addressed to Mr. Berg, uh, having to do with the homeowners association and, uh, ensuring compliance with what is set forth in the preliminary plat as well as the plan unit, uh, development. And I'm anticipating that, uh, if you know, Mr. Berg, that, uh, Capstone would be willing as part of the development agreement to ensure that there's a declaration accord, recorded against the property to ensure compliance with, uh, the city's, uh, requirements for this particular development?
It is my understanding that these will also be incorporated in the developer's agreement as well as if, at your request, Mr. Larson, we do a separate, uh, document, we can do that as well.
Is that different than covenants, or is that part of the covenants?
Great question. I just want to make sure that what we have here is that these requirements are recorded against the property, and so that way, um, you're not only binding contractually the developer, but you're binding the homeowners association, all the owners, to these requirements hereafter. That way, we can have assurance that it's not just the developer, uh, that is meeting these requirements, and then the developer leaves, and then all of a sudden, you know, the requirements just are not enforceable. We are going to be able to enforce it after the developer has completed the development.
We have, we have two representatives.
Need an amendment?
No, no, I, I, I think it's here, and I just wanted to make sure that it was commonly understood by the director. Um, and, but I do appreciate, uh, Councilmember, uh, De Roche's, uh, concern because it would be nice to hear that Capstone understands that this would be a declaration recorded against the property as well.
Do the gentlemen from Capstone want to address this at all? Hey, guys.
Yeah, you're in a hurry to there. Thank you. Yeah, we were having a little discussion about, um, about that.
Little tate of tay, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the document that was provided, um, for your reference was, was a request, uh, from our meetings with the council members to give a guideline or a rundown of exactly how we intend to, to, to put the HOA together. So that's our intent of that document was for it to be a guideline. The details of how that will be, um, all put together is what we anticipated working through as we went through the developer's agreement.
Yeah.
So how that, um, is recorded and what processes that looks like, I think, will be defined as we get to the approval process for,
Yeah.
for the declaration, so, or for the, excuse me, for the developer's agreement, the final plat.
Mr. Larson's doing his due diligence as our attorney to make sure that it's recorded, that we're looking for that.
Exactly. The broad outlines are basically going to be in the declaration, obviously. Declaration is going to ensure that, uh, these particular agreements are in place. Um, but you are not going to have these agreements also recorded as well because they have to be living, breathing, or, uh, documents that will continue through the life of that particular development, and that will change over time. So I understand that.
Thank you.
None from me.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made and seconded on resolution twenty-twenty-four dash-zero-four approving preliminary plat for Viking Meadows by Capstone. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Let the record show, it was Miss, Mr. Smith in the negative. The other three members present. I'm sorry, Mr. Miller couldn't be here tonight, but he has a family emergency he's dealing with.
Mr. Mayor, coupling the, uh, the approval of the preliminary plat, there's also the plan unit development resolution authorizing the go-ahead with that. Uh, those, uh, are chicken and egg sort of items. One has to come before the other, um, but they're both required in this location.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-four-dash-zero-five, uh, approving PUD Viking Meadows.
Second.
Okay, the motion's made and seconded to approve resolution twenty-twenty-four-zero-five approving the planned unit development for Viking Meadows. Do we have any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Again, it was Mr. Smith in the negative. Please do.
Mayor and council members, staff, I do want to just say thank you. This has been a long process, and, um, it's been very uh, beneficial, the conversations that we've had. We've met with several of you in person, and we appreciate that time. Uh, I know it's, uh, it is a time and a commitment that you guys, um, have taken very seriously, and we do appreciate that. And, uh, we're very grateful that you've given us the opportunity to move forward with our plan here to, to develop, uh, this great community, I believe, for, for East Bethel. So thank you for, for everything you've done.
Thanks for your patience with us, and, uh, let's make sure it was a good decision, and everybody do everything, do their best to do a good development and take care of the people who buy there with the homeowners association, the whole bit.
Absolutely.
So, looking forward to a good working relationship.
Looking forward to it as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for your patience. Do we have any department reports that we need to address? Aaron, why don't you give us a department? Do you have a voice left?
Mr. Mayor, I've given you about everything I got for tonight, for, for this two weeks.
All worn out.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have staff reports?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Council reports?
I got, uh, two things. We had a Sunrise River Watershed meeting, uh, last week, I believe it was. Uh, we reviewed, uh, the twenty-twenty-three projects that were accomplished and took care of some house keep, keeping items, so, uh, low-key meeting, really. Um, my second is with the work meetings that, at six o'clock on the second meeting on the month. Uh, currently, they are not broadcasted, and I think for best transparency for our citizens that they really should be broadcasted. Our work meetings have always been broadcasted. I don't see why they shouldn't be going forward.
Yeah. Well, let's, uh, discuss that when Mr. Look gets back, and we'll have a meeting of minds one way or the other. Yeah, and we've only had the one meeting, right?
Yeah, we've only had the one, and if we can have that discussion before the next meeting, before the next work meeting, so that that can be televised.
Yeah, I agree.
That'd be great.
I agree.
That's all I have.
Have you got anything else?
Happy Valentine's Day.
This week. Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Stay off the ice. Coon Lake's opening up again.
I've been married forty-two-and-a-half years, Brian. I've given up on that. Happy Valentine's Day. I'm still here, right? That's what my dad used to say to my mom, I'm still here, aren't I? You know, uh, anything else, or are we going to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 That's a unanimous.